You want to sign up?
Hey, buddy. We talked to you.
You did. We can't buy it. I don't listen.
We're late to say you're already gone.
By the time I got home, we started talking.
That's what the boss said.
Yeah, she started. I'm a fool, everybody.
Roy, did you want to speak? At the Republican vote this Saturday? Did you want to speak?
Sure.
Well, I didn't ask for rights. Do you want to sign up Republican?
Fine. Yes, you want me to put it up?
Fine.
Let's go ahead and call this meeting in order. This is a special call meeting for the purpose of discussing the proposed city charter changes, which we were presented with at the last meeting. And I really felt like there wasn't enough time between then and Thursday that would be the first vote on this. It takes two votes to amend the charter. And I felt like maybe we needed to get the council together and discuss these changes before even the first vote, even though they can be discussed any time after that. And it will, basically, the way it would be set up, I'm assuming, is that it would be a vote this Thursday and then a vote at the September voting session, as it is now. So also on your agenda, you see a discussion and possible action on resurfacing of Brown Street. I put that on, so I want to eliminate it because some additional information has come to light. I had hoped while they were in the area paving out there that I could have engaged them through a change order or something to have to do Brown Street, but they got through so quick with the other paving that they've already basically moved out of the area. So that'll be a project for another time, unfortunately. So that one is off. Also, we did not have on here public input here, but I always like to afford the public a few minutes to speak on any issue that they wish to speak on. And Mr. Rust?
I just, you didn't mention the ordinances. I think you probably want to talk about those too. The original document that I presented included what are now ordinances because they will better serve the city as ordinances than a part of the charter.
Yeah.
Do you skip over? I'm sure you wanted to talk about that.
Yeah, we will. I know, honestly, I didn't actually see those until today because when I got to the end of the charter changes, I didn't turn one more page on that to see that there were amendments in there.
I think there's three pages, and they were all originally in the original document that I presented.
Right.
There's nothing new in there.
Right.
Different place.
Okay. So I would ask that, you know, you speak on an issue, and we need to always be respectful of the council as well as of the other members of the public who are listening. So we don't like to have, you know, personal attacks or any bad language or anything like that. So just be sure that, you know, make your point, make your statement, and, you know, we certainly will consider your input. It's not a dialogue. Once again, we'll receive your input, but that doesn't mean we're going to answer questions or anything at this time. So, but anyway, let's get started with that. Andy Potts. We have about four individuals that have asked us.
Hey. I'm going to do a little review of how we got here first before we go right on topic. I want to say that I believe democracy is dying in Canton, Georgia. Ben Franklin said it best, "When the people can find a way to vote themselves money, that will herald the end of republic." We must act now to save our city from being overrun by the self-serving. Just over a month ago, Mr. Rust, Mr. Huffman, and Mr. Goodwin, who seems to be missing a lot, voted an elected official over $150,000 of taxpayer money, even though there was an active ethics complaint against that official, in addition to the $60,000 education he received to become city manager. Then they violated the Open Meetings Act by holding an illegal meeting to deal with this ethics complaint. This is a misdemeanor under state law. Litigation from this may still be pending. As elected officials, you should all know better than this. And Mr. Dyer, as the city's legal representative, you should be embarrassed for this mistake. Now, I want to say, Mr. Huffman, you recently, specifically you, went against the wishes of several of your constituency in voting for Mr. Cummins. Now, you also voted against a committee position that you didn't even know existed. And this was quoted in a paper. It's very embarrassing for the city. I've also made you aware for years now that the stormwater setup on Wooded Mountain Trail is in direct violation of the EPA's Clean Water Act, and you refuse to do nothing. Now, why do I bring all this up when we're talking about a meeting about changing the city charter? It just shows that this council does not have the ethics standards to be amending our charter at this time. We have basically a situation where the same three council members want to change the city charter and basically strip the mayor of power, give more power to the city manager, and make a three-person supermajority. Really? You want a veto to be overruled without a majority vote? Can you not see the future erroneous consequences of a change like this to the city charter? Even proposing such a change makes me question your motives and abilities to represent the citizens of Canton. That ideology is not in alignment with the citizens' best interest. I propose that all charter changes be put on hold until after the November elections. If these changes are put forth, I will ensure a very swift backlash against the council members who see fit to ignore their elected duties. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat Doan.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I just want to say it's wonderful to be able to say good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm not going to begin with questions for my statement. I'm not going to ask why the number of votes needed to override a mayor's veto, changes from four to three in these proposals. The change would take away the majority vote presently required to override a mayor's veto. I'm not going to ask why a council member no longer has to resign from his or her office before running for another elected office. I'm not going to ask that one today. I'm not going to ask why a change is proposed that allows a member of a board, a commission, or an authority to be removed from their position without cause. Presently in our charter, removal by a person on a board, authority, or commission is with cause. What I am going to ask is, why the hurry? What is the big hurry? Why would our council want to press forward with proposed charter changes prior to the election of a council member to fill the vacant seat? November is not very far away, folks. Why is it so pressing within the proposed changes that would require a passage prior to the adequate opportunity for citizen review? These proposals were just put forward. I'd be willing to bet 98% of our citizens don't even know what you're doing. I've read the proposed charter changes and find some of them to be questionable and even disturbing. Why was no rationale for change included in the documents suggesting these changes? I worked on the Charter Proposed Change Committee along with Mr. Rust and other members for 18 months. Each charter suggestion, each change we had, was accompanied with rationale. There was a reason for it. No reason has been supplied for any of these proposed changes. Also, and this is just a housekeeping sort of thing, there are numerous grammatical and word usage errors in the proposals. They need to be cleaned up, or it would be embarrassing to have these things published the way they are. Finally, the Canton City Council Charter belongs to the citizens of Canton, not to the city council. This rush to passage denies the citizens a voice and opportunity to contribute to these proposals. Some of you ran for office with a promise of open government and transparency. This proposed action flies in the face of those promises. I support the council as a whole and will support a review of any proposed charter changes with adequate time for review, but I do not support the way this is being handled. Thank you.
Thank you. Phil McGurran.
Ladies and gentlemen, John, I believe I understand what this is all about. It's a poorly disguised attempt at a power grab. Such proposed changes in restriction to the mayor's veto power are in direct contrast to the charter that you worked almost two years on, proved of, and were very proud of. If this issue is so important as any issue changing the charter is, why be in such a hurry? We've got three months. We'll have a full council. The full citizenry will be represented. It rather reminds me of the way things are being done in Washington, DC now. Take advantage of a crisis. You are one of the authors of this charter, and now you try to distance yourself from it. Thank you.
Thank you. Roy Taylor.
Good evening. I won't repeat what's just been said because it speaks my mind. Each person has pretty much come up and explained the major issues. The voting for the overruling of a mayoral veto with a less than majority does not make any sense, and a rush to change is not required.
Thank you. Okay, that is all members that have signed up for public input. What I thought, you know, I would like to do is that since I did call this meeting for that purpose of discussing this matter is I'd like to go through the, do it and make some comments about it, and then I will open it up for any other council member to make comments. And I'm probably not going to make the comments, maybe at this point, on the amendments, but just the charter changes. Under, first thing I would suggest is that we number the pages so that when they refer, when they get lost, someone will be able to find them. Five, six, seven, eight. I've got 11 pages, is that right?
I think that includes the, what next?
Maybe we'll be on target here. Under the first section of proposed change, it says, "The council member for each ward and the mayor shall be elected by the qualified voters of the city at large, and each candidate for city council receiving a majority of the votes cast in their race from the city at large shall be declared elected to the city council." A couple items there. I think it says that each candidate for city council and/or mayor, I think mayor ought to be included in that as well, receiving a majority of votes cast in their race. That seems a little bit obvious that they're not going to get elected in somebody else's race, I don't think. So I would suggest that that may be altered. "Under the next section of vacancies, the office of mayor or council member shall become vacant under the occurrence of any events specified in the Constitution in the state of Georgia Title 45." I'm not sure what all that, maybe just, I'm not sure what Title 45, probably a lengthy document that specifies the reasons, but I would assume the resignation, death, and, you know, would be two of them, or inability, a disability, maybe, to perform the duties would become vacant. I don't really have, you know, have a major problem with that, assuming that's what Title 45 says. "Under the special meetings, special meetings of the city council may be held on the call of the mayor or three members of the city council," which is basically the way it is currently. "All special meetings require that a written statement be delivered to the city clerk at least 48 hours in advance of the special meeting to be held. Such written statement must be signed by the mayor or three council members and clearly state the purpose of such meeting." Totally agree with that. I think it should be. "Notice of such special meeting shall be served on all other members personally or by telephone personally at least 24 hours in advance of the meeting. Such notice to council members shall not be required if the mayor and all council members are present when the special meeting is called. Such notice in any special meeting may be waived by a council member in writing before or after such a meeting, and attendance at the meeting shall also constitute a waiver of notice on any business transacted in such council members' presence. Only the business stated in the call may be transacted at the special meeting." I don't know why that would be the case if, what that says is that you can't add something to the agenda, I'm assuming, after the meeting starts, which quite honestly I think is a good idea, and I think it's probably a good idea for a regular meeting. I don't know why a special meeting should be any different than a regular meeting as far as adding new information that the public has not had opportunity to know about. Second page. "Council members made by resolution request the mayor to establish a committee to investigate and analyze an issue, and returning to full council all feasible options for discussion and with recommendation for possible action. All such committees will have written stated objectives, and the committee will confine their endeavors to the stated objectives." I'm not sure at this, what it says, the next one, it says, "The mayor is required to give all committees a written stated objective, and the committee will confine their endeavors to the stated objectives." That would mean that the mayor would be giving every committee a written stated objective. My feeling is that if it's a council committee that the council requests, that the council should be the ones to give the stated objective rather than the mayor, because the mayor may not give the same objective that the council had intended at the time. So I think that would be appropriate to make that change. It also says, last sentence says, "When the stated objectives of committee have been fulfilled, the mayor will dissolve the committee." You know, I mean, this whole paragraph to me is an administrative act on behalf of the mayor, an administrative act, because it says the mayor will dissolve a committee, appoint a committee. The next item, "Every ordinance adopted by the city council shall be presented promptly by the clerk to the mayor for signature." That's fine. "The mayor shall have the right to veto any ordinance adopted by the city." The mayor shall have the right to veto any ordinance adopted by the city. The mayor, within five business days of the date of adoption of the ordinance, shall either, one, approve the ordinance and return it to the city clerk, or, two, return the ordinance to the city clerk with his or her veto, along with a written statement of the mayor's reasons for re, reason or reasons for the veto. If the mayor has approved the ordinance, it shall become effective on the date of his approval. If the mayor neither approves nor vetoes the ordinance, shall become effective at twelve noon on the sixth business days after the adoption. I don't understand, uh, it seems to me that five days is an arbitrary amount, and I really don't see the advantage in changing it from ten days to five days. Uh, I'm, I'm not sure anything is gained there, I'm not sure the public is, is benefits of him, uh, from that, five days. Uh, the next paragraph, if the mayor has vetoed the ordinance, then the city clerk shall place the ordinance on the agenda for the next regular scheduled meeting of the city council. At the meeting, should the city council adopt the resolution with the affirmative vote with at least three of the members present, the ordinance shall become effective immediately and shall not be subject to any further veto by the mayor. If a quorum fails to exist at the scheduled meeting to address the veto, the veto will be sustained, and the original action voted on by the council will be considered non- void. Should any council member desire further discussion or consideration of the defeated resolution, such council member must, uh, reinitiate such action from inception as if the initial action not yet before addressed. Yeah, I, I have a real problem with, uh, three members, uh, you know, passing, uh, overriding veto. Even though it could be a three-three tie on the council, three members could override a veto. Uh, all that does basically is, uh, reduce the requirement to override veto and weakens that veto substantially. The next item, Chief of City Manager Appointment, the current defined process is deleted in this entirety and in, in its place is, the city council will form a selection committee consisting of the mayor and two council members. The selection committee will predetermine requirements and qualifications, and will interview all candidates meeting the predefined requirements. No candidate will be interviewed or included that does not meet the predefined requirements. The most qualified candidate will be determined by a majority vote of the council in an open public meeting. I think this has, uh, if the selection committee, if the selection committee had established one or two years of, of prior experience as a city manager, then we would not have Mr. Cummins here to that, eh, eh, as far as a qualification. So, I think it's, I think that the qualifications, eh, I really don't understand the, the need for that, because I think the qualifications have to be, uh, flexible enough to allow for certain other experience to be substituted in some cases for actual city manager experience. But, uh, further down, two-twenty-eight, the chief administrative officer works at the pleasure of the mayor and city council, uh, and may be removed mops anytime with or without cause. Either the mayor or city council member may request an executive session to discuss the chief administrative officer's performance and or display of action desired to be taken. I'm pretty sure that was the way it has been, uh, in the past anyway. Uh, section two, that's twenty-nine, acting city manager. At the beginning of each calendar year, the chief administrative officer or city manager shall designate, subject to the approval of the city council, another city employee to act as an acting chief administrative officer in the event that the chief administrative officer or city manager is unavailable to perform his or her duties. The acting chief administrative officer shall be authorized to act up thirty days. In the event that the chief administrative officer shall be unavailable to perform his, his or her duties for longer than thirty days, or the position of chief administrative officer is vacant. The council will appoint an officer of the city or outside administrator to be acting chief administrative officer during such period. The city council approval may revoke such designation anytime and appoint another officer of the city or outside administrator to serve. I would ask, what would be the definition of an outside administrator? It's not defined, I think it probably should be. Page four, the chief administrative officer shall be responsible to the city council. I think it should say responsible to the mayor and city council. Uh, and we have, we, we use in terms here interchangeably sometimes the council, I think, to mean mayor and council, and sometimes we use council to mean, uh, council only. But I think, I think it makes more sense to refer to both mayor and council separately, uh, as opposed to just, just council members.
That was given.
And at least it ought to be uniform. Yeah.
Tell me what your thought was right, right there again.
Uh, I think it ought to be mayor and council, for, responsible to the mayor and council.
It currently says city council, so you'd be changing it to have.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah, that's fine. Because you're going down, and see, that's one of the problems with what we have in the, in the current charter too, is that it also, in some cases, does the same thing. So, if we're going to correct it, well, try to, try to make it uniform and standard and consistent, I think, throughout the charter. Uh, the chief administrative officer receives general direction from the city council. I think it ought to be mayor and city council. And conveys all decisions made and all significant issues to, to the mayor and city council. See, it's, he, he, he receives his direction from the council, but then he gives the answer to the mayor and city council. So, that somehow, no, that distinguishes, that, that would tend to distinguish the mayor and, uh, from the city council. Uh, oh, uh, section A, appoint, and when deemed necessary for the good of the city, I'm assuming that the city manager deems it necessary for the good of the city, it doesn't say who decides that. Suspend or remove employees and administrative officers directly reporting to the city manager except as otherwise provided by law, or personnel ordinances adopted pursuant to this chapter. The manager shall authorize, I think the word shall should be may, not shall. It says shall authorize any administrative officer who is subject to the chief administrative officer's direction and supervision, the authority to exercise those, but, these powers with respect to subordinates in that officer's department, office, or agency. I honestly don't even think that sentence is in there. I thought that was, was pretty clear that the city manager's in charge of all, uh, employees with the exception of the city clerk. But, so I don't know why that would, and, and he can handle that however he wants to as far as, you know, letting the department head fire somebody with or without him being involved, I guess.
But, but, I can.
Yeah.
But I'm saying, the manager may, whether you would force.
Uh, yeah, I mean, or, or take it out completely, either one, but, but I assume that, that's pretty, pretty well-known, that's his, uh, his party of duty, you know. But it says the mayor shall, that means he has to do it, you know, and I don't think you want to, uh, restrict the city manager to convey that kind of authority to subordinates under the city manager. If he wants to, he can, but if he don't want to, he shouldn't have to. Item B, direction supervises administration of all departments, offices, and agencies of the city except as otherwise provided by this charter or by law. Item C, attends all open city council meetings and attends all closed meetings except those held for the purposes of deliberating on the appointment discipline or removal of the chief administrative officer, and shall have the right to take part in discussion but shall not vote. Item D, see that all laws, provisions of this charter, and acts of the city council subject to enforcement by the chief administrative officer, or by officer subject to the chief administrative officer's direction and supervision are faithfully executed. I think that's either very poorly worded, or I just can't seem to understand how the city manager can, uh, enforce acts of the city council. I think what they're inti, what is intended there is that, uh, directions, that, he takes care of directions from the city council. What, what does that mean, acts of the city council? I don't know what it means. Uh, I mean, I, certainly, uh, the city manager can't oversee necessarily the acts of the city council members elected body. Uh, E, prepare and submit an annual operating budget and capital budget, including any and all requested substantiating details supporting planned item, line item revenues and expenditures to the city council. I think that should be to the mayor and city council. The annual operating and capital budgets for the next fiscal year are to be submitted seventy-five days in advance of the start of the next fiscal year. My question would be, the seventy-five days, what if he doesn't? Item F, submit to the city council and make available to the public a complete report on the finances and administrative activities of the city as of the end of each fiscal year. On that, that, that's basically saying they will submit an audit. And I would, uh, I would recommend that that, that, they say that at the end of the year we, we would have an audit presented to the city council within a hundred and twenty days, uh, after the end of the fiscal year. That's four months. I think six months is way too long to wait for an audit to be done, I think a hundred and twenty days. But once again, what if it's not? Item G, uh, make such other reports as the city council may require, I think, you know, you, maybe, maybe that should just be city council and the mayor not involved, I don't know, may require concerning the operations of city departments, offices, and agencies subject to the chief administrative officer's, uh, direction and supervision. Efficiently manage all departments, offices, and agencies of the city in the most cost-effective manner of, manner, manner possible. My guess is, how, how do you measure, how do you measure that? How do you measure, how do you define, uh, efficient and cost-effective? Prepares and presents to the mayor and city council, uh, analyses of issues with solutions to city requirements, showing all viable options, stating pros and cons, along with estimated cost of reach. I would suggest that to pre, prepares and presents to the mayor and city council all requested analyses of issues. Uh, think, you know, I think that it should be something that we request, uh, before we go to an awful lot of trouble, we'll find problems and present them out there. Makes recommendations, uh, selecting the most viable options, stating all reasons for such recommendations. And I'm assuming that viable option is, is in the opinion of the city manager. Item J, whenever the council chooses to assign an issue investigative analysis, to assign an issue investigative analysis and options development tasks to the chief administrative officer, the chief administrative officer will keep the full council advised as to the status. I think I should say mayor and council advised. Item K, keep the city council fully advised, once again, I think it ought to be mayor and council, as to the financial condition and future needs of the city, and make such recommendations to the city council concerning the affairs of the city as the chief administrative officer deems desirable. Reports to the city council shall be in the format of monthly income expenditure statements, including such substantiating details may be required. I don't think all reports that he should make to the city council should be in that format. I mean, I think, and I don't, you know, I think that's one format, and from the financial standpoint, but there may be other reports that have nothing to do with the finances that he needs to make. John?
Gene, I just think you missed, read one word.
Did I? Okay.
Requested versus, you said required, and it's requested. It does change its substance, the last word.
Such deep, oh, it may be requested, yeah. Okay, I'm sorry, yeah. Item L, provide city council committees with, with reports, documents, and all necessary information required to fulfill the charge assigned to the committee. I would also say that that should be with requested reports, documents, and all committees, uh, assigned to the committees. Provides to all council members any report, document, or information provided to a single council member when and where applicable. I would probably say that that should also apply to the mayor as well. Item M, uh, see, I, I, under, under the, the reason I say requested reports is because I, I think it's really probably up to those committees to decide what they would like to know and what the information they need. And then they can request it, and, and the city manager then would be, uh, obligated to provide them with all the information they could. Item M, meets with the mayor when required by either the mayor or chief administrative officer, city manager, or, for consultation, advice, and reporting on the affairs and management of the city. Well, the chief administrative officer cannot require an elected official to do anything, okay? I mean, he can request it, which I think is probably the, uh, but this says the mayor can require the chief administrative officer to meet with him, but then it says the chief administrative officer can require the mayor to meet with him. Oh, wait, that, that, that don't add up. Item N, advises the mayor immediately of any major reported situation or incident in the city that would attract public attention and create press inquiries. Perform other such duties as are specified in this charter as may be required by the city council. Okay, item A, under page five, except for the purpose of informational question, informal questions, I'm sorry, inquiries and investigations, the mayor and the individual members of the city council acting alone or with other council members without the approval of the city council. As a deliberating body, to the contrary, shall deal with city employees solely through the chief administrative officer, and neither the mayor nor the city council members of the city shall give orders or direction to any such department head or employee, either publicly or privately. Now, this one has, has a couple questions, and, uh, this should say, shall deal with city employees under the supervision of the city manager, because this, if you take this literally, the clerk then would be responsible to the city manager, and not to the council as, as the charter indicates now. If you read that as, uh, that's, that's really sort of off, I, I really don't, that sentence is way too long, and I'm not sure what, as a deliberating body to the contrary, means. So, it's a little bit awkward there, at least to me, maybe a lot. Uh, under the powers and duties of the mayor, the mayor should preside at all council, city, uh, meetings of the city council. Be the head of the city for the purpose of service of pro, of process and ceremonial purposes, be the official spokesperson for the city, the chief advocate of policy, and promote economic development of the city. Item C, be responsible for all dedications, including the scheduling and invitation preparation. I would say that this too is an administrative duty, and it'll make, make a little more sense a little later why I say that. Uh, item D, have the power to administer oaths and take affidavits. Item E, sign as a matter of course on behalf of the city, all written and approved contracts, ordinances, and other instruments executed by the city which by law are required to be in writing. Fulfill such other executive duties as the city council shall by ordinance or resolutions established. I'm not, I'm not sure a resolution will work on, on that one. If you have an ordinance, I think the mayor's obligated to, to fulfill that. A resolution, I'm not sure. Uh, and another question I said is, well, what if he doesn't fulfill that, uh, uh, requirement? Item G, upon direction by, by council, conduct inquiries and investigations into the conduct for the city's affairs, and shall have such duties as may be provided by ordinance. Once again, what if you, what if they don't, you know, or they don't do it? Item H, prepare or have prepared an agenda for each meeting of the city council, which shall include all business submitted by the mayor, any council member, the chief administrative officer, the city attorney, the city clerk, and any member of the public as provided by ordinance, uh, agenda processed defined in section two dash nineteen. This, the preparation of agenda, uh, to me is also an administrative duty, I think. Uh, next item, the mayor shall be the chief executive of the city. The mayor shall possess all of the executive power granted to the city under the Constitution and laws of the state of Georgia, and all the executive powers contained, paragraph two thirty-five. Uh, this, basically what this eliminated was, uh, the state, part of the statement, the mayor shall possess all of the executive and administrative duties, and the administrative part was taken out. Uh, so it appears to me that this would maybe eliminate, uh, some of the, uh, eliminate the mayor from performing administrative duties, which are all back through the, the proceeding that we've just talked about, anyway. Members of boards, uh, commissions, and authorities of the city shall be nominated by the mayor within sixty days of any vacancy or term expiration. All nominations are subject to the approval of city council for such terms of office, and in such manner as shall be provided by ordinance, except where other appointing authority terms of office or manner of appointment is prescribed by the charter or by law. My, my question there on the sixty days, I mean, that's not a problem as far as I'm concerned, the question is, who, it doesn't state in here who's responsible for notifying the mayor when that sixty days begins, that someone has resigned, and bingo, your clock starts now. I mean, it, it doesn't make, doesn't say that. In the event the person nominated by the mayor shall not receive approval of majority of the city council, then any member of the city council may make a motion to nominate another person, and the mayor's nomination shall be no longer required. If and until the mayor nominates a replacement for a vacancy caused by term expiration, then current member will continue to serve in that position. Failure of the mayor to nominate a replacement for either vacancy or term expiration within sixty days validates the mayor's right to make the first nomination. In this case, following the expiration of sixty days, any council- In this case, following the expiration of sixty days, any council member can nominate any eligible person for service. No council nominations may occur unless the mayoral nomination has been rejected or sixty days have been, have been passed, whichever occurs first. Any member of the board, any member of a board, commission, or authority may be removed without cause via council resolutions. Actually, I don't even think that's possible, because some of these are legislative in nature, authorities and so forth, and we can't, we could not change something that was created unless we had specific authority to do so, I think. Another question I would have is that if I make a nomination now, and the council disagrees with that nomination, I get to make another one up until sixty days, is that right? My sixty days doesn't start again, right? It's a total of sixty days, is what I'm assuming. But I, but I think we need to know, two things in there, we need to know who advises the mayor at the six, beginning of the sixty days, and it should be something advised in writing, I would think. And I think we need to add to the statement, any member of a board, commission, or authority may be removed without cause via council resolution, I guess, unless other laws may apply to that. And I really, I think with the term without cause is, you know, I think we ought to give some kind of cause anyway, give an answer, you know? We just don't like you, or, you know, whatever it is, you know, we just, you're not doing a good job, there's somebody else out there that, that we think needs to participate, and not you, or something, at least maybe give a reason. Pretty much, that, that's, that goes, well, that goes through the charter part there, I guess. I would, I also think we need to, if we're going to amend the charter, it needs to, we need to correct a problem that we've got now with the actual appointment of a, appointment or special election to fill a vacancy. When the legislature changed the, this year, we can have an election, a special election in March with the general primary, or in November. Only those three dates Georgia law allows you to have a special election. Well, last year they went back, and because of the overseas and other reasons, I guess, ballots, timing for the ballots, they moved the primary back to twentieth of May. Okay? Well, if we, if we lost a council member or elected official on May twenty-first, we could not fill that seat, that seat could not be filled, we couldn't call a special election until November. I think it would be wise to have in there an opportunity for the council to appoint someone to serve until that special election is held. I mean, it makes sense to me, we're going quite a few months without somebody, and that board is essentially, partially unrepresented. So, but anyway, that's something I think. Now, I did say, there is, there are the ordinances on the other side that I'm going to reserve my discussion, there's several, several things in there that I would like to deal with, but I'm not going to go into those actually tonight unless someone else has, you know, wants to do it, and we'll bring that discussion up later. So as far as the charter amendments themselves, I'll just open it up for any council member to make any comments with, Mr. Russ?
Gene, I, could you, did you, I identified the one, section five, there thirteen, the option by plurality.
Did I miss that?
I think it's on page seven.
Oh, did I skip?
Yeah, that's, that's an attempt to clear up plurality and majority.
Right, we have, we have both of those items in our charter now, and of course, the, I think the last, probably legal charter we had had majority, and that's what we've been going by, anyway. State law allows you to, to, you know, state law says majority, but you could, the city council could have a plurality if they chose to do it. What this does, basically, is reduce any doubt and says that we will have a majority vote.
You know, that's an interesting point, because, because it's in there, I think the change that's in there was never approved by the state, so we can, we don't have a choice to go into one or the other, we got to stick with majority, we can't go to plurality unless we go back to the state.
Well, I don't know. I, I think that's, well, that's what, I thought if it involved elections, that you had to go through the state, but I believe, that's not what you found out today, right?
Right, as far as the elections.
I mean, whether it's a plurality or majority, majority, I think she seemed to indicate that you could do that in the home rule. Well, if that's the case, then how can we change it if both items are already in there without going back through the legislature? How does, who are we technically to decide that we're going to pick this one and take out and the other one to leave in?
Because both of them were added by council and not added by the legislature. We, we got to guess. Those two were added, the inconsistent provision was added in two thousand and five.
Okay.
So, the original charter just said the majority.
So it's a two thousand, it's a nineteen twenty-two charter, is that when we go back?
The one before two thousand and five, right.
Okay.
The problem is if we went for plurality, then we're really changing what we've been doing now.
Right, yeah, absolutely, absolutely, yeah, I agree with that. Anyone else?
Did you go to the last point, too?
I may have missed something, I've got so much hand scratching, I'll miss it somewhere.
I think that's just the last item.
Which one?
Seven one one six, it's the very last item I think.
Charter modification.
Oh, oh, yeah, gosh, how did I miss that? I must have skipped page seven, but, yeah, it says, all, in this, there's definitely need to change here, I think, because it says, all modifications of the city of the canon charter will be according to the following process. I don't think you can say that, because you can change the charter through the legislature. And what this would do is preclude sending it through the legislature. I mean, you can change it, so you can't say all changes have to go through this specific process. The mayor, any council member, or city attorney may identify and recommend a modification to the charter at a regular council meeting, should a majority of council agree with the discussion and possible modification to the charter. The mayor shall form a council review, charter review committee consisting of the mayor, two council members, the city attorney, and three members of the public, one each selected by the mayor, and each committee member.
You mean, you appoint two committee members, and they select two, so that it's, that's the, you're bringing back to the.
The city attorney and three members of the public, one each, okay, and each committee member, okay. The committee will discuss the recommended modification, and should the mayor and both council members agree with the recommendation modification, the modification will be submitted to the full council for possible adoption. The charter can be modified only once during the calendar year, there must be an elapsed period of twelve months between charter modifications. Multiple recommendations, recommendations for modification to the charter will be accumulated and submitted only once per year by the charter review committee to the council's consideration. First of all, after I've thought about it, I'm not sure if we can limit that to one year, change it only once a year. The reason being, because if we have the authority to change a section in the charter right now, we have, we have the authority to go back and change another section, which would be that section, later on. What if, for instance, we were to say, we can only change a charter once every twenty years? Do we have that authority?
Is it legally, why do I have that authority?
Well, I, I know, but I'm, you know, I'm trying to be a facetious about that, but I'm saying that if we can say one year, we can say two years, we can say five years, we can say twenty years. So I've got a real concern as to whether legally, basically, we could set the number of times that we could change a charter.
Well, to go back and address your issue of your concern about the state, this process is the first step for a presentation of any charter changes to the state. We could take these charter changes and take them to the state, but it requires that, as I think, every one of us, all seven of us, to unanimously agree to send it to the state, is that right, Bobby? Every one of us has to agree to take the changes to the state.
That's their, that's the legislative delegation's policy.
Yeah, okay. So, so, there's, if we can do anything by home rule, or unless we change the form of government, or we try to take it to the state, that's made up for it.
Right, but this says that all modifications to the charter will be by the following process. That would, that would seem to eliminate our option of going through the legislature in the future.
But we modify first at home rule, and then we, certification policy is almost like with the state, so the modification comes before it goes to the state, so it's, that's a.
But we can't, there's some, some things we can't modify ourselves, right?
Oh, I, I, okay, I got you. We can make a regulation for modifications, but you don't.
We, we could certainly make a regulation.
I think you got a valid point.
I think it needs to be worded differently.
That's a technicality, but it's important.
Or you put that under orders.
Under what, under orders?
Making the modifications, maybe, when you can, how many times you can do it.
Well, I, I think, I think he's got the same, I think he's got the same problem, because if we couldn't, we can't tell a council, they can't, next council or whomever, they can't do something to that charter. I don't think we can. I don't think we can tell them they can't amend that ordinance and change it back to where there is no, no time.
We didn't say they couldn't do it, it's just that it's the time, they can do it if you count here.
One time.
Yep.
But not twice, but I, but still, that's telling you can't do that, even if you adopt this one, you find another problem, we're saying you can't do that again this year, correct that problem. I mean, I think it's something to think about.
Nomination, we only nominate, you know, once a year, or whenever the term expires.
Well, yeah, that's a little bit different. You know, I think that paragraph needs a little bit of work, to say the least, but. Some of these changes, I'm not sure how they really, you know, improve our, our city or help our citizens or anything. But, you know, this is for the council to discuss, that, anybody else has any comment? Mr. Grant?
I want to back up a little bit and kind of talk about the origination of this, and this ordinance, as it is written, it says, whereas the city council desires to amend the charter in several respects, I think what should be respects. I don't think the city council in its entirety desires, I know, I mean, I tend to take this charter, I served on the committee also, and spent eighteen months along with Mr. Russ and Ms. Gold and many other citizens, and certainly our charter was in much worse condition than it is now, and granted, it's not perfect, but I tend to treat it a little more sacred than, you know, just changing it on whim, and I certainly know that when it was presented last Thursday, and granted, the one that was posted for this meeting is different than the one that was presented last Thursday, thank goodness. I had not seen it, I had not heard it, I had not previewed any discussions to it, I think Ms. Councilwoman McGree was not, the mayor was not, and so, so I do, it does make me wonder about the motivation, the origination, origination of it, and makes me question the, you know, the reason, the rationale behind it. And it certainly seems some of the changes in here are motivated by, by recent events. Again, right or wrong, we all make mistakes, but I do think it's a danger to start tinkering and tinkering with and changing our charter based on recent events, based on the personalities made up by this council or any given council at any given time. It can change at any time, and it may back us into a corner while this charter may be changed at any time. There was a period of time before, if we followed the right process, that it can be changed, and it may cause problems down the road, so I have, you know, questions about some of these in detail, but, you know, I just, I just wonder about the process that we're following, and then, you know, I did have a question about the charter modification process that's being proposed here about the review committee consisting of the mayor, two council members, city attorney, three members of the public, you know, one each selected by the mayor, and each committee of the council member. I think that's a, you know, a rational and decent process, and I wonder, if we're proposing that for charter changes, then why not follow that process for these changes? I don't understand what's a rush is, other than, you know, I don't see anything that's proposed in this that we have to do, especially this Thursday, when we have major issues coming up, like our budget, our unified code, redoing our zoning map, which are major, very timely issues. So those are the questions that I have. Again, we're going to go through these word by word and item by item, but again, I wonder what's a rush, and then I just want to be very thoughtful and mindful of the process we're following, so.
Thank you. So great.
I echo Mr. Grant's concerns and the concerns of rushing this through with everything pressing us about the zoning map, the budget, the UDC, the codes. One thing on here that disturbs me or bothers me, that we really need to look at, is section two dash one two.
Two what?
Two dash, two dash one two, it's on page one, it's vacancies. On the original charter, and on the first document we were given a week ago, it said, it's, it went on after enacted, here it ends with enacted. Our existing charter in states that a sitting elected official must resign their post before running for another office. So let's say I decide to run for mayor, and I keep my council seat, and I'm running for mayor, and I get elected. That then is going to leave a council seat open, to a great cost of the community. The runoff election in December was eight thousand dollars, the fire district election was, referendum was thirteen thousand dollars. So this special election for a council member who did not resign their post could go anywhere between eight and thirteen thousand dollars, and that's a huge expense to the community. They don't deserve that. We had a perfectly good item in the charter that says a sitting elected official must resign to run for another post. I'd like to stick with that, so as not to cause the taxpayers more money.
Could I address that one?
Yeah.
Please.
There's a state law that overrides a lot of this. The state law requires you to resign if your terms don't coincide, so, and what you, and our, the charter says you had to resign regardless of terms, but it's under state law, if your term ends on December thirty-first, you don't have to resign to run for an office that would start on January first.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
I think some of what you were describing would be quoted as a state law.
Okay, good.
Meaning, if, if your term wasn't going to end, you would have to resign.
Good to know. How would that affect a special election?
You wouldn't have to have.
You wouldn't have to have one, then, right?
Because, because you, if you wanted to run for mayor, and, and the mayor's term ended at the same time your term did, you wouldn't have to resign, you would just start your new job, and you'd have an election for your seat, because you wouldn't qualify for both of them.
Okay. On page four, whoever our mayor might be at any given time, these points talk about notifying city council. I sure do not want a citizen approaching my mayor, asking my mayor a question, and my mayor not having access to information, and embarrass me and the city. So I would really like to see that any reports, any documents that would go to the city council member, go to the mayor, whomever that would be, me or Mr. Holgood.
What paragraph?
I'm looking at all of.
Page four?
Three and four, section two dash two nine, acting city, oh, I'm sorry, two dash three zero, powers and duties of the CAO. Everywhere that it says to make documents, reports available to the city council, I'd like to see that made available to the mayor, whomever that person is, so that they don't embarrass me when a citizen asks them a question, and they say, I don't know.
Well, I can't help but believe that was the intent of that, but the problem is, we've got, we, we, we're not consistent in there. Need to be consistent one way or the other, define council as the mayor and six council members totally, or, don't mix it up, don't, don't say mayor here and council there, mayor here and council there, one or the other.
And the city council is to find this mayor and the six council members. What you agree? What you would really be doing is eliminating where it says mayor and council. But it is a, I mean, it's, it's thrown in, it's all in there, there's different ways to say it, but city council is defined to include the mayor and city council members.
Jeanette, Sandy, I think Jeanette addressed that when he was reading, and I was doing, noted, and Bobby, correct me if I'm wrong, but when we were doing that charter the first time, we wrestled with what to call this inconsistency throughout the charter. We tried to address it by saying every time mayor and council, we just decided to say city council and that includes the mayor. So it was not an attempt to exclude you, to include you.
That's the title of the title of government, we got mayor and council.
You guys talking to your mics, we can't hear you back here.
That's the title of government, we got your mayor and council.
Thank you.
Thank you for indulging as an experienced person. On page five.
You could.
L. L provides city council with, uh, please, last sentence, provided to a single council member when and where applicable. Who decides when and where applicable? Who decides the, okay, you said word, applicableness of that situation?
Good question.
Because we have on the first page, section two dash twelve, we state that an election will be won by a majority, we state it there. Do we need to keep it in section five dash one-three? Is that redundant? Because it's already covered in section two dash one-two.
Did you say five dash one-three?
Five dash one-three, election by plurality, delete and replace by law. That's already stated in section two dash one-two. You win your election by a majority. Is it not redundant to leave it in, or is that something, Bobby, we have to legally do, leave it in?
No, you can delete, you can just delete that whole part together.
And then, uh, section two dash one-two, the mayor did mention this, in their race is awkward, it's just an awkward statement. There's no way to win other races. So that just seems an awkward, redundant state, uh, prepositional phrase.
I'm sorry. Can I ask, Bobby, what was it that you said you could eliminate?
Well, five point one-three, we're, we were talking about changing it for plural proof through reality to majority. You could just leave all section and not even have it in two different places.
Where is the second part?
Well, what was it?
Just.
Eight seven.
I do three numbers, thank you.
Two, four, and then five.
Seven.
Okay, Andy, what was the last number you wanted, said on your calendar?
Section two dash one-two.
Oh, yeah.
The prepositional phrase, in their race, seems awkward and unnecessary because one person is not going to run in more than one race. On page two, section two dash two-two A, the mayor shall have the right to veto. That's B. C, and then, um, it says, if the mayor neither approves nor vetoes the ordinance, then it shall become effective at 12 noon. To me, that should be its own separate letter, because you're giving, uh, two examples and that seems to be another example of issue with the veto.
Would you, would you repeat that? I think she's trying to break up the strategy or something.
An additional point under twenty-two point two-two A.
On C, the, I wanna, think it would be good to break out the last sentence, because it's another example of the issues in the veto. Rather than lump it with C, it should become D and D should become E. If the mayor neither approves nor vetoes the ordinance, then it shall become effective at 12 noon on the sixth business day after its adoption.
Yeah, I like the sentence before that, would you throw that in on D? Well, the sentence before that one, include that in D, if you're gonna break, sort of talking about what happens, so we can make it a D and an E or?
Okay.
That's what your point was, kinda separating those out because they're describing something different.
Yes, because they're separate.
Makes it clearer, is what you're saying.
They're separate examples.
Anything else, Sandy?
What did you, what did you teach?
Construction.
Construction.
I was technology parapolar, lab manager in Gwinnett Schools for 12 years. And I was queen of redundancy. Uh, page three, section two dash two-seven, CAO, you've got the selection committee will predetermine requirements. I think pre is redundant. The selection committee will determine the requirements, there's no need to predetermine them. Then it says, and will interview all candidates meeting the predefined requirements. They're just defined, there's no reason to pre-define a requirement, you just define it.
Wouldn't you tend to be more correct to say, use determined again rather than defined?
You can use determined, but if you pre and pre and pre.
Yeah, I think in both cases, pre is bad, but consistently determined or defined, either one. I think determined would be better to repeat than using defined at all.
That's fine with me.
Does that meet your construction rules?
That does, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Right. The only other thing is when, uh, Mr. Dyer said that on page four, the chief administrative officer, city manager shall be responsible to the city council, and he said, and mayor, that that already exists in our current charter. That was good to hear, it just proves to me that we have so many inconsistencies, that our charter does deserve a thorough, thorough look. And it deserves to have time taken with it and not rushed through it and to have this looked at and talked about. And I think that's more time needs to be done on this than is going to be given it in this go-round. And I, I did wanna say to Mr. Russ, if I may address him.
Sure.
Uh, that this was a lot of work, looks like a lot of thought was put into it. Who do we give kudos to for all of this work and thought?
I presented the document for sure. It was a lot of, it was, there's, there's eighteen months of work in it.
Well, I, I was just wondering.
I said, you know, Sandy, one of the tough things on committees, because I've served on the, the UDC committee for four years, the charter committee for eighteen months, and one of the difficulties with any, uh, I don't, I don't say the public isn't helpful, but it really tends to make the process very slow. Four years for the UDC was very tough and eighteen months for the charter was very tough. When you spend days and days trying to argue, we spent an enormous amount of time just arguing over something the mayor correctly questioned, which is city council and not mayor and council, and we tried to make it simple, because the mayor is always considered part of the council. So making it that simp, was trying to simplify the identification of including the mayor always, so.
Who worked on it with you?
I, uh, I had help.
I'm, I'm just talking, who worked on it with you?
I had help.
Who worked on it?
Why is that relevant?
I, I mean, a lot of work went into it.
You didn't help me.
It wasn't asked.
Okay. I, I, I did not do it alone.
So, um, what benefit to the citizens will, what benefits will the citizens receive from these changes?
Like the original charter direction we had from Jean, we were trying to make the charter better. This is an attempt to make the charter better, not to take power away from anybody or add power to anybody else, to clearly identify the type of government we had and make our, have and make our charter consistent with that all the way through it. Though there's no room for error in terms of interpretation of who does what when. So it's, it's, it's an attempt to make a good document a little bit better. We said when we approved it, there were things we wish we could do, we'll clean them up as we go. I hope this is a part of the cleanup process. Doesn't mean somebody else can't come back. And one of the concerns about perennially changing the charter is to, let's give it a breathing room to take this and prove it and then collect, like I have done here, collect the things that need to be fixed and do it once a year or do it whenever. Not to restrict the ability to do it, but just to make sense out of the process and add more to the document than one change.
I don't disagree that the charter needs, um, work. I'm not amused by Mr. Russ refusing to tell me he helped him on the document.
Amen.
You're not amused?
I didn't, I didn't try to amuse you, so, thank you.
Let me, let me, you know, we're, actually, the, the ordinances, I think we should have a little more time on for sure, hopefully since, uh, actually, I just saw these this afternoon and really looked through them. And I do have quite a number of questions, one of which it's, uh, allows for voting at any meeting. And, uh, it really doesn't define, in my opinion, the issues that can be voted on at any meeting well enough. And it leaves, leaves a lot of, uh, subjectivity, I think, there that, uh, would be better redefined. And also, you know, even, even now, I guess it says, well, it says the same thing, but, you know, any council member without stating a reason can remove any item on the consent agenda for a separate standalone vote. Why not give a reason? Why not? I mean, it wouldn't be anything wrong with giving a reason and whatever it is, I think. But, uh, anyway, there, there's several things here that I think we do need to, to look at and, and of course, this, this coming meeting will be the first time we have actually seen these ordinance changes here. So.
Jean, on a consent agenda, if you take something off the consent agenda, you're by definition going to have an opportunity to argue what the issue for taking it off is, meaning it'll come up for vote independently. Consent doesn't allow individual debate on any one item, so that's a very fair process that I would not like to see messed with.
Well, I mean, the reason could be very simple.
Wait a minute, Jeanette, it's gonna come up in a few minutes on the, in the council, because you're gonna, you're gonna cut it out and say, what's your reason?
The reason could be, I want more discussion.
Yeah.
Absolutely could.
That, that's by definition, that's by definition.
Mr. Mayor, I think.
Go ahead.
Just a general comment, is that when I first joined the, this council, and you, you know by now my background and my feelings about the processes of government, and I, I'd like to move more swiftly, I guess, on, on issues versus, I guess, faster than what maybe your desires are. And that's always, you and I have had that understanding.
Of course.
And, and I just, uh, in favor of moving faster, fast is not maybe the right word to use, but I just believe in bringing the issues up and let's make some decisions and move on. And it, it's just, government just operates entirely too slow. I'm not saying we gotta do it real fast, but we gotta do, do better than what we do, rather than sit back and try to think of what is the definition, what is is, what's the definition of is-is. I, I just, that just drives me insane. So, well, I, I, I look for us to, as a council, that people elected us to, to make decisions. They elected us to make this, a lot of these decisions.
Well, I think they also elected us to represent their desires as well, and the only way that we can do that is to get as much public input as we possibly can and, uh, in, in order to really know what the citizens would like for us to be doing.
Mr. Mayor.
And I don't think we, I don't think they elect, excuse me, then I'll let you do it.
Sure.
I, I don't think they elected us to come up here and make decisions that, uh, that are only our decisions. This is what we want to do. We could care less about what the public wants or anything. This is what we wanna do. We know what's best for you as citizens and we're gonna make that decision. I, sometimes I know that just, this, this countered me. I think we need more input from the public and then I think things work smoother. Government's slow, there's no doubt about it, but I think, I think it's inherently slow and in a purpose for that.
Well, that's, that's good rhetoric and, uh, but, um.
I'm good at that.
You are, you are excellent, I'll give you that. Kudos for that. But, uh, I had a great thought for that. Once again, it's, um.
Wow.
Hey, y'all, I'll get my age one day, so. It'll be that.
You're kind of looking back to you.
Thank you. I, I did have a.
Who, uh, I'm sorry, Mr. McGee.
Mr. Huggins, I agree with you that government tends to move very slowly, um, and would like to move faster, but I am very concerned about moving that, this fast on this, uh, document, because we're having an election coming up and why not just hold off two more months when we have a full council and have good input from that person?
May I just question you? We don't know who that person is and how much input they can really give on an issues like this. Even yourself has said that, you know, I think a few minutes ago referenced being the short term, but to bring a new council person on and, and to vote on those issues. I, I, I went through it, I, you know, my first year, I was a lost puppy too.
Mr. Grant? Two things I have to agree with Mr. Huggins on, on moving swiftly on issues that affect our city and, and I think I said that from the beginning, I try to act on that and I, I think we, we do. And I, again, I don't see any urgency in moving forward on charter changes that will kinda advance us down the road on specific issues. So I would, you know, suggest a longer and more thorough review of, of this process. And two, the question, a question I had, Mr. Russ identified is sort of the, the goal was to sort of kinda identify and, uh, clarify our form of government. And the question that came up on page six, were the, um, mayor's chief executive of the city, the mayor shall possess all the executive power granted to the city, what was removed from the old charter, uh, old charter was executive and administrative power of the city? Could that possibly be interpreted as changing our former government by removing the administrative power as granted to the mayor also?
It very well, in my opinion, it possibly could, because, uh, according to the GMA, and I, I checked with him back a long time ago, not recently, not since this came out, but the, the, according to, uh, according to GMA, that statement is once included in the form of a strong mayor form of government. That's, that's, that paragraph is included. And by taking some of that out, it may well, it could change it, I don't know, I don't know that it would, but, um.
That was my understanding too, in interviewing the GMA, and so that was a question I have. Does it possibly, I don't think that, in that case, clarifies our former government, I think it, uh, it does quite the opposite.
Yeah, what it, what it actually said, uh, before was the mayor shall be the chief executive, uh, of this, of this city. The mayor shall possess all the executive and administrative power granted to the city under the constitution and laws of the state of Georgia and all the executive and administrative powers contained in this charter. Paragraph two dash thirty-five, that's what it said before. Anyone else?
Yes, I, I think that's part of the confusion, Jean, that's, that's my opinion, is, is that's part of the confusion, because if you look at the powers and duty under two-point thirty-five, it doesn't, you don't have administrative powers. What's the chief administrator's office, officer's job then? I mean, it's, it, to me, it's confused.
Is the preparation of an agenda, not an administrative job, is?
Could be considered that, yes. Could be, could be.
Could be either way.
There's several, several items in here.
But that's administrative as strictly as applied, administrative as strictly as applied to council, as applied to administering city, uh, business. Meeting, managing people and. applied to council, as opposed to administering city business, meaning managing people and processes that the council decides on.
We've got an administrator that we pay a lot of money for.
Well, I mean, I don't think that was the question. The question was, is that statement in there that's contained in the, in the strong mayor forms of government, does buy, changes some of that, does that, in essence, could that be interpreted as, as changing the form of government, I guess?
Do, do you think we are a strong mayor?
I think we have been at one time.
Are we not, I mean, is that the way we're operating now, is a strong, your, your opinion is we're a strong mayor?
No, we're not operated that way.
Okay. Is that, the intent of our Charter is to be weak mayor or strong mayor?
I, I don't know what the intent was, I just know what it says, you know, and, and that paragraph is specifically in the.
Do you think by eliminating the administrative officer language might help clarify the fact that we are in fact a weak mayor?
I don't know. The only thing I know is, is that I would, I would want to be very careful about manipulating something like that, because it could be construed, as Mr. Grant may have indicated, as, as manipulating the form of government. Whether the intent is there, or you even want to change anything or not, if, if you, if you do change something, you know, it could, it could be construed, and require legislation to be removed, is what I'm saying.
Bobby, do, do we have legislation that is approved by the state that says we are a weak mayor or a strong mayor? I mean, everything we've done by home rule.
Paragraph two point three six was added in two thousand and five, which was done by the city council. It didn't exist before. Under the Charter before two thousand and five, it just said the mayor was the chief executive officer. So that was added by council.
So it could be removed by council without, Gene. You know, I, I gotta say something, Gene, at Savannah, I was in a conference down there, and I begged them, I said, is there any way you can please change the word weak mayor to a different word? Because I don't think it defines you or the role of our mayor. And it just, to me, it's like, I said, wow, when somebody gets elected and they say, wow, I just won the election, I'm a weak mayor, you know? You know, I say, I, I don't like the word, I don't necessarily agree with the word, I just think we need to be consistent and clarify, and make your job easy and our job easy as to what you do and what is expected of you and what's expected of us, and what's expected of the city manager.
Sure. Let me ask the city attorney, are there any, is there any verbiage at all that's in our Charter now that was put in in two thousand and five that we're not changing? Otherwise, we're wasting our time, or why do, why not, why won't we do, we need to change it all?
Well, there's lots that were added in two thousand and five.
So what we're saying is, we're going to all this trouble to change a Charter that's got stuff in there that we know is not valid at all? I mean, why don't we get a valid Charter sometime?
But do we leave it in there if we know it's not?
I would think not, wouldn't you? I mean, it looks to me like, it, it, it looks to me like there's an awful lot of work to be done on this thing that, you know, two meetings are not gonna take care of.
I don't want to do eighteen months again, for sure.
Well, I understand.
There's no reason to.
No, I, I think there's some tweaking that needs to be done.
So what we're gonna do, we're gonna correct or attempt to make some changes in there, but we're really not gonna have a real valid Charter, because there's still quite a bit of stuff in there from two thousand and five that was put in that we know is no longer valid. I mean, something that doesn't add up there to me. Well, we need to change it all, correct it all at one time.
Yeah, we're talking two years, and I mean, I honestly, I mean, I don't think you can do this. We, we always agree that this was a, a process, and this is just one step in a process, and somebody else can take the next step, I don't care. You know, I mean, I, we're trying to make it better, that's it. I have no other reason, I have no axe to grind against you or the city manager.
But I'm saying, under this, though, you couldn't do any more correction for a year.
Well, you can make an awful lot of.
Theoretically.
Planning to do that, and that, that to me is just reasonable. I don't think we need to come to every council meeting and talk about a Charter change.
Let me ask the city attorney, do you believe that, that we can restrict a future council from making changes to this Charter by home rule?
Well, I think you could put a twelve month in, but I think it could be removed by a subsequent council.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, even this council could remove it.
Right, right. You could just change that twelve month requirement at any time.
At any time you want to change it, you can change that, you know, so, but I mean.
It might slow down the process a little bit.
Well, it would slow down, it's warming up, we're changing it.
Which you suggested is good for government, right?
Maybe we establish another committee.
Well, isn't that what we, isn't that what we're missing? Isn't, yeah, I mean, whatever. Okay. Our, our goal is to have the best it can be, and that's as simple as that. And, you know, my suggestions or our suggestions for perfection here are always a working process. It's not going to be, ever be done until long after work on. I think what you get into is that when you get it done in a fashion that you're really very comfortable with, and it works, then you go and put it in the state, take, take it to the state, and then you get it done, and then it makes it harder to change it. I, I don't think it's at that stage right now. Home rule. We can, we.
I mean, I think.
What we're trying to take out was put in by home rule. We're not trying to change your form of government. Is there anything in here that concerns you that we're trying to change your form of government?
Other than that statement as far as form, no? Other than that statement there?
What's it?
What does that statement mean to you?
What's the, what, which?
The one we were talking about that Mr. Grant asked about.
Oh, I, I think it, you're the chief administrative officer and the chief executive officer and chief administrator officer. I think that's extremely confusing, because all throughout the duties of the chief administrative officer is the city manager, so what are you trying to identify? Two people to be chief administrators? I don't, see, that's, that's the confusion, that's the crossover.
But, you know, my, my concern is that by taking that out, you may be doing away with the administrative duties of the mayor. And yet, you've assigned several in there that would be administrative in nature. So it's conflicting in that sense.
I think that the concern was always that administrative is two aspects of administrative. It's administrative as it applies to the council work, and to your work in the city to get that work done, but when it applies to running the city, it's the chief administrative officer, you're not. That's not, that's not your job.
What is the penalty for violation of the Charter?
Oh, forty-seven lashes, I, no.
No, wait. I, I think, here's, here's the concern you have to be careful of, I think, is when you put something in the Charter and somebody does, does not abide by the Charter, you're breaking the law.
When you put it in an ordinance, there isn't, there's also, you're breaking an ordinance, but the penalty is less defined. I mean, you're not breaking the law, you're breaking an ordinance. Is that correct, Bobby? Did I word that right?
I think there is a penalty.
I'm talking about two different things.
He's talking, well, actually, he was talking about two different things. He's talking about ordinance and Charter. Charter is an ordinance.
But your, your, your question is if you, if an individual does it with a task and doesn't do it under the Charter, it's not, it's not breaking the law. I mean, there is no.
It could be a formality.
But there are actions, but there are processes in here for adopting ordinances and so forth. If we violate those, those make our actions invalid. That's what Mr. Rust was talking about, that if we don't sign contracts right or approve contracts right, that the contract is invalid.
Anybody else having comments, questions, anything?
Okay. I just, I just say that I think it's, what's in here is a better defined of, better defined of responsibilities to help move and make the city operate more efficient. And, and that's a key towards a lot of the goals, or some of the goals that we talked about last Friday, is efficiency. And again, government is not known for efficiency, but that was something that was, one of our four goals is reduce that. Now, is this necessarily gonna reduce that? I don't know. I doubt it, but it might have some impact on it. And, but I think it just better defines who does what. And let's, and let's move on.
How does, let me ask this question, and how does changing the quorum voting on, for override a veto better define who does what? I mean, I don't understand that.
I think the definition defined there is just going from, to, to the three.
You have to, you have to have a quorum anyway, Gene. You have to have a quorum, so the mayor, mayor pro tempore would have to be one of them, or have to be one person.
Well, wait a minute, the way that's written in there, if there's six people in attendance, six council members and a mayor, it only takes three votes to override a veto. Was that the intent?
It's not a majority.
All right, that was, that's what it says.
Yeah, I, I.
So three.
Mr. Mayor, you pressed it.
I don't think we need to, it, I think it was intended that if there isn't six people there, five people there, then three is what you need. That's it.
Three's all you, oh, if there's five people, three's all you need. I understand that, that, I understand that, but that's not what this says.
Well, what it says right now is four members have to vote for it.
That's the, it's poorly worded.
Four members, is this the?
If the wording.
Oh, it just says four.
If the wording in there is bad now, it was worse before. I'm not saying it's perfect, but it was worse before. Four doesn't make sense either.
Well, it might.
You have four, and you have, you have a quorum, and you don't have four voting for it, but you have a majority voting for it, it would be, it couldn't go forward. Four is a poor number per a quorum.
I think, though, the intent, John, was to make it a little more difficult to override the veto. But in order to reduce that down, then what you're doing is make it less difficult to override a veto, and, and that, and that's part of the authority that the mayor had that is being diminished.
Do you, do you remember that you didn't have veto power before?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And, and the design of it was, the purpose of the veto, if it was a fundamental and basic purpose, was to get the word out that the mayor didn't agree with what we were trying to do, and then the public would have an opportunity to give feedback to the council members and to you as to the support or lack of support for your position of vetoing.
But if, if, if it comes back to override it, then if only half the council vote for it, should it, should it be overridden or not?
Four is a bad number, Gene. It's a bad number.
Four people. You have three out of six, though? I mean, that's, that's what we're talking about, three out of six.
That's, I, I.
I mean, that, to me, I mean, I don't know anything that passes with a, with three out of six. I mean.
Not now?
You?
In a regular meeting?
No.
No.
I don't know anything, I mean, I don't know any issue that passes by three votes alone if there's six people there, six council members. Mr. Grant, sorry.
In my opinion, if the council can override the mayoral veto without a majority, then it invalidates the mayoral, having a veto to begin with.
It's pretty close.
I think four, four is bad. Four is really bad. Majority would be better.
Yeah, okay.
Really, we, we amended the Charter that required an ordinance, I think the issue is whether two people can do it. If you had a quorum of three councilors and the mayor there, you, you don't want two people overriding it, I'd just say the majority. So it's majority, but at least three, I think is.
If you said a majority, but at least, at least three.
Which is what we have for passing any ordinance. It's, it has to be at least three votes to pass an ordinance.
Four was bad, two is bad, three is bad, it doesn't say that that is the majority.
Yeah.
Is that fair?
Yeah, that's what, that's basically what I was saying. I mean, you know.
But the question would be, do you want the override to be a three to two vote? What it says now is you have to have four votes. So if, you could say a majority, but at least three votes, that allows a three to two vote to override, which is, that's the question, I think. We seem to make that there that's majority.
In eighteen, eighteen months, we're gonna build in bad defect right there. That was bad.
I'm not sure of the defect, I think the, originally, it would be one of four votes to.
I think that was the intent, I would think that was the intent of it, is that it would be.
At least four people were there, but then if you have.
At least four people voted to override. That was, that was the purpose of it, is that it wasn't supposed to be a slam dunk, okay? It was supposed to be, it'd come back and at least a majority of the full council felt like, felt strongly enough, that the, the mayor said he feels strongly enough to veto it, it comes back to the council, they're welcome to override it, but they've got to feel very strongly that, that it ought, that they were right to begin with, and four out of six is not, you know, too much.
I think, I think if, if we get it, the wording changed to a majority is three, then we have no issue with that. Because all we're trying to do is protect against what it, a majority alone means two could do it. Four means you virtually might not be able to get anything done, although I understand that.
If you had to get any override done, but that was the idea, to make it a lift.
What about the issue where you change four people? It's not, quite apples to apples, but some of our referendums and votes that we've had over the years, and we got, like, senior exemption years ago, at three hundred and seventeen votes, I believe it was, and it passed overwhelmingly out of twelve thousand registered voters, you know? Pretty, pretty weak numbers, but it sure went into, sure went through.
I'm not sure where that came from.
It came from the recs.
I'm saying that, Mr. Grant, do you have something?
I was just going in with regards to the three to two vote, the majority is, it's a prime example of the issues we have, of deciding those issues without a full council, because a three to two vote to override a mayoral veto with five council members, we don't know how that works, so.
Anyone else?
Okay, I'll entertain a motion, Jim. I'm sorry.
I didn't want to, I, it's a different topic, so I wanted to make sure we were finished with that topic. I believe Mr. Rust or Mr. Huffman stated that this document better defines who does what. Am I correct?
Yeah.
Great, thanks. What I'd like to know is, who worked on the document, because I want to be sure that who worked on the document is qualified to make the decisions on how council does its business.
I'll just read the document, just like you wrote.
So I, I'm, I'm very concerned about who worked on the document with Mr. Rust, to make sure that they're qualified to decide how council conducts business and how council represents the public.
Anyone? Any other comments, questions, answers?
She's asked that question a couple times, and she doesn't know what it is.
Do you have any help preparing your questions for this evening? Did you have any?
Oh, okay, thank you.
She did answer the question, though.
She did, because it's an honest answer.
Okay.
I'll, I'll think tomorrow's, you know.
Have a motion, Jim, we have a second. Those in favor, if you can find a second. Vote, no? We're, Jim.